Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to the Livonia Chamber of Commerce Candidate Forum, featuring the candidates running this fall for the city offices. My name is Dan West, I'm the Livonia Chamber of Commerce President, and I will be the moderator for the program this evening. This forum is designed to be an informational program to give Livonia's business community and residents a chance to learn more about the candidates running for Mayor of Livonia and the Livonia City Council in the upcoming election taking place Tuesday, November 5th. The Livonia Chamber of Commerce is a nonpartisan, nonprofit trade organization that represents more than 1,000 businesses and organizations. The chamber does not make any individual candidate endorsements. We thank everyone in the audience for joining us tonight, what a great crowd, and it really shows the commitment to the community that we have by so many in our town, and to the candidates for their participation as well this evening. We also want to thank Livonia City Television for recording this forum, so others can watch rebroadcast in the coming weeks on Channel 8. We will open with a 70-minute forum for the eight candidates competing for four seats on the Livonia City Council. Then, we will hold a 40-minute forum involving the two candidates running for mayor. The Livonia Chamber's Government Affairs Committee established the format and the initial questions for this forum, and in accordance with chamber policies, we only invited the candidates whose names will appear on the ballot this fall. Members of the audience are invited to ask questions of both the mayoral and city council candidates by submitting them on three-by-five cards and handing them to either Eric or Jane. They either have them, if you want to raise a hand, and they'll provide a question for you. Jane's over there, and Eric's right there. So, they can hand you questions as you're going about. And then submissions will be screened to prevent questions that are redundant, inaccurate, or personal. We'll ask as many questions from the audience as we can in the time allotted. At this point, I'd like to ask everyone in the audience with a cellphone, mobile device, to please silence or turn them off, so there's no interruption during the forum. With that, it's time to introduce the eight candidates running for four seats on the Livonia City Council. In alphabetical order, they are Scott Barr, Greg Coppola, Jim Davis, Rob Donavick, Brian Duggan, Brandon McCullough, Eileen McDonald, and Kathleen McIntyre. Please welcome the candidates. The top three finishers will earn a four-year term on the council, and the fourth-place finisher will earn a two-year term on the council. A council member holds a part-time position on the city's seven-member legislative body. The top overall vote-getter will earn a position of city council president and mayor pro tempore in the next two years. Each candidate will be invited to make a one-minute opening statement and a one-minute closing statement. The candidates will have up to one minute to respond to each question. Each candidate is also allowed a 30-second rebuttal, a single 30-second rebuttal, after a question's been answered, one throughout the entire forum. The candidates are arranged in order of numbers that were drawn prior to the forum. Accordingly, we'll rotate the order which each candidate responds first. Laura Tmouch and Sherry Davidak will be in the front row and will serve as our timekeeper and inform the candidates of how much time they have remaining. And with that left, we will begin our forum with the opening statement provided by Kathleen McIntyre.
Thank you, Dan. Good evening. I am Councilwoman Kathleen McIntyre, and I would like to thank the Livonia Chamber of Commerce for organizing and hosting this evening's event, and to everyone who's taken the time to attend. I'm very pleased to have this opportunity to share more of my ideas and vision for our great city Livonia and its bright future. I've lived in Livonia for about 45 years. It was home for the first 22 years of my life, and 23 years ago, my husband and I chose to make Livonia our home and have loved raising our two sons here. I've been a very engaged member of the Livonia community. I vote in our elections, volunteer actively, and am an enthusiastic supporter of many of our cultural, service, and philanthropic organizations. And I love nothing more than being out and about in our community. It's been a privilege to work hard to serve all of you for the past four years. I am especially proud of my contributions in the areas of public safety, economic development, and Livonia's master plan. I never forget that I work for you, and I am asking for you to reelect me to Livonia City Council this November.
Now, the opening statement for Jim Davis.
Good evening. My name is Jim Davis, and I'm running for council because I love my hometown. I've lived here over 20 years, and I have an excellent voting record. My wife Elaine and I raised our children here. We lived a block from her parents, where her grandparents lived across the street. Our children went to the same school my wife did when she was a child, and that's multi-generational, and that's the strength of Livonia, and it should be preserved. I'm running to bring my experience to council, not use the council for my experience. I'm running to represent and speak for all citizens of Livonia, not a party or a group. I've remained true to the nonpartisan nature of our local government. For 30 years as a police officer, I swore an oath to uphold the public trust without fear or favor, malice or ill will, never letting personal friendships or animosities influence my decisions, and I'll continue to do so for you on city council. Thank you.
All right, the opening statement for Rob Donavick. Please, no applause, please no applause.
I didn't pay her for that, I promise. Good evening, my name is Rob Donavick, and I am running for Livonia City Council. Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for putting this event on tonight. Thank you to all the candidates for stepping up and running for office to represent the community that you love. And thank you to all the voters in the auditorium tonight, and to everyone watching at home. Again, my name is Rob Donavick, and I'm running because I love my city. I was lucky enough to go to school, Livonia Public Schools, since I was a kid at Johnson, up to Frost Middle School and Churchill High School. I was lucky enough to play football for the Churchill Chargers and play over at Bentley Field as a kid for the Orioles, and now I'm running for city council. See, my folks immigrated to America in the 1980s, they came here with nothing, and now we have something, and this is kind of my way of giving back and paying back to the community that's given me everything I have. I want to represent people, I want to work hard in being an honest representative of my community, and I hope that I can earn your vote, and you can learn a little bit more about me tonight. Thank you.
All right, opening statement for Brandon McCullough.
Hi, my name's Brandon McCullough, I'm running for Livonia City Council. I was raised in Livonia, South Livonia, to be exact, in the Clement Circle area. I'm a product of Livonia Public Schools, having attended Cleveland Elementary, Emerson Middle School, and graduating at Franklin. After that, I attended Lawrence Tech University, where I graduated with honors with a degree in construction engineering. Following my incredible education from LPS and Lawrence Tech, I was privileged to serve as the Director of Construction at Habitat for Humanity, where I managed the construction of over 100 homes, and hundreds of families served benefit to these accomplishments. From there, currently, I serve as the Facilities Manager with the city of Novi, where I manage two divisions, I push forward sustainable initiatives, and I just got done acting as owner's representation on a $11 million DPW renovation. I reside in Burton Hollow for the past 10 years with my beautiful wife Casey, who is a special education teacher at Livonia Franklin, and our incredible daughter Harper, who is attending Buchanan. I want to put together my education and experience to push our city forward, and I think I have what it takes.
All right, opening statement for Eileen McDonald.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Eileen McDonald, and I'm running for Livonia City Council. I would like to thank the chamber for hosting this evening. I think this is a wonderful opportunity for the citizens to understand each of the candidates' vision of the city. In the private sector, I work for PBS Chemicals, and I manage million-dollar contracts proposals. I'm a former Livonia Public School trustee, and I've represented the students and families of LPS from 2012 through 2016. I consider myself a voice for all, and especially those of students of special needs. My husband Bob and I have lived in Livonia for the past 23 years. We love our neighborhood and raised our two children here. We've watched it evolve, especially over the past few years. When we moved to Livonia, it was during a time when people were wanting new homes and were moving west. Now, we're seeing an insurgence of people living downtown, young people wanting to experience new city life. Young, single professionals that move downtown now want to establish themselves in their young families in our community for our affordable homes, safe neighborhoods, convenient shopping, family-friendly parks, good schools, oh, sorry, and I would like to represent you and your views. Vote for me, Eileen McDonald, by November 6th, and by absentee.
All right, and then, opening statement for Brian Duggan.
Thank you. I would like to start off by thanking the Chamber of Commerce for hosting tonight's event. And get my computer up and running. I've been a Livonia resident for over 55 years. I married for 37 years to my wife Laura. We raised our two children here, too, Roxanne and Brian. I served as your Livonia City Councilman for six years. Before that, I served as your Livonia Housing Commission for five years, appointed by Mayor Robert Bennett. I was the past president of Livonia J.C.'s, and believe it or not, I was the past Vice President of this organization, the Chamber of Commerce. I'm currently the Treasurer of the Livonia Spree, and I'm currently the Chairman of the Arts Commission, appointed by Mayor Jack Kersey. Over my time, I have raised over about a half a million dollars for local charities to help women and children. I am the one that brought the Vietnam War to Livonia, and I'm proud of that. And it was all paid through my nonprofit charity. I dedicated my life to Livonia to make it a better place. And now, I'm asking for a favor, I'm asking you to give Brian Duggan one of your four votes. Thank you.
Opening statement for Greg Coppola.
Coppola, by the way.
Coppola, I'm sorry, my apologies.
Thank you, Dan, and thank you to the Livonia Chamber of Commerce for this opportunity tonight to connect with the voters. Good evening. Livonia has been and continues to be a very well-run city, a reflection of decades of competent and compassionate leadership. Hot as zip code, safest community are evidence of this. However, term limits create a critical gap in experience as season's council members term out. What I offer to you is a clear choice, a choice for broad and deep experience. My civic service of over five years in the Zoning Board of Appeals currently has its chairman, coupled with my 35 years in private sector as a decision-maker and a problem solver, makes me a uniquely qualified candidate and one of the best candidates before you tonight. If elected, the focus of my term and my promise to the citizens of Livonia is to build on the prior successes while recognizing and exploiting opportunities as they arise. What does this mean? It means I will ensure that the city's priorities are properly supported while actively looking for prospects for improvement. I'm anxious to provide my thoughts and ideas to you this evening, and I hope I persuade you to vote for me on November 5th.
And the opening statement for Scott Barr. Good evening, I'm Councilman Scott Barr. I want to start tonight just by saying thank you. Thanks for the confidence you showed to me in the primary election. This is the first time that I've run as an incumbent, and I can tell you it's a different experience than running as a first-time candidate. To be out there with a four-year record of literally hundreds, probably thousands of decisions having been made, and to know your record's out there being judged, it feels very vulnerable. When I got the phone call a little bit after 10 o'clock on election night telling me that I'd come in first, I was totally taken back. It literally took my breath away. It's very humbling, and it's gratifying, and I thank you for that. Thankful that I've been able to serve to your satisfaction. It also filled me with new resolve and excitement for the next four years, in which I hope to continue to serve as your councilman. I love this community, I've spent all but one year of my life here. I love that my children get to grow up here, and I'm grateful that I have a role in the stewardship of your local government. I'm really looking forward to tonight, thanks for being here.
All right, well now go into our questions. The first question, we'll start with Mr. Davis. As you campaign in town, what issues are residents discussing the most with you? And how have you responded to their concerns about that issue? Again, as you campaign in town, what issues are residents discussing the most with you? And how have you responded to their concerns about that issue? Mr. Davis.
Thank you. One of the issues that has come up over and over again is how Livonia treats its 1,300 acres of parkland. Going house-to-house, there's many of our neighborhoods, as you know, are in areas where the school has been closed and removed, and there's green space, and what are we going to do with that? And neighbors are concerned. They're also concerned about park connectivity and exercising in Livonia, especially younger families. I got an email, actually, from one person who wanted to see if it's possible for us to connect our parks with trails that are safe, so you don't have to cross busy streets. I'm very active, too, I was training for a triathlon, I was trying to find 13 miles to ride my bike, and it was very dangerous to do here in the city, so I actually had to go away from the city to train for that. So, the idea that we could connect our parks is something that would be something I would work on, and if I'm elected, thank you.
Mr. Donavick.
There's many issues that impact us all, but as a community, to me, the most important and the most dire issue is our public safety issue. Livonia, for the longest time, has been known as one of the safest communities, and that's because of the hard work of our police officers and firefighters. I'm a reserve police officer in one of metropolitan areas, and I understand how difficult the job is. Every issue is important, but without making sure we take care of our public safety first and foremost, all the other issues fall to the wayside. We need to make sure that our public safety, from a police standpoint, we can hire police officers, we can make sure they're trained, and we can attract new police officers when we have vacancies like we do now. We need to make sure we do the same thing for our firefighters. These are individuals, they don't take days off, there is no snow days, there's another that, you know, they spend every single day trying to protect us as a community. So, I think we need to really talk about it and make sure that we're given the kind of importance and the conversation that it needs, and offer these officers and firefighters the competitive packages and the benefits that other communities, local to us and comparative to us, are offering their officers to make sure that we keep our city safe, because a safe community is a strong community.
Mr. McCullough.
I, too, want to touch base on public safety and kind of go into more detail. Right now, I don't know if you guys are informed, but currently, we stand at 25 vacancies for the police side, and upwards of over five on the fire side. Public safety is a cornerstone of our community, and I'm happy to gain the support from both the police union and fire union. I want to be at that table as a council member to make sure that we find a solution to the retention issue, and I'll be there with specifics. I'll be at that table, and anything to do to support that, to create a better place for our public safety, I'll be there.
All right, Mrs. McDonald.
Thank you. I, too, have heard discussions on the police officers and firefighters issues, and most citizens aren't even aware because our safety officers do such a wonderful job keeping us all safe. But the thing that I've heard most, the biggest concern, is our Wayne County roads. As we all know, they're in really bad shape, in really bad condition, and it's a concern for many citizens. I know that, you know, the city has to push a little harder in order to get that problem resolved. And I believe working with our Wayne County Commissioners on a one-to-one basis would help considerably. That's my biggest concern.
Mr. Duggan.
Well, what I hear a lot is housing. Maybe that's because I'm in the business, I don't know, but seniors, they want condos. And I think what we need to do, next time there's a large tract of land, like one of the schools is going to be able to sell, instead of single-family homes, let's do condos, let's dictate what we want over there, so our seniors can downsize, be on the first floor, and live the life they want to live.
Mr. Coppola.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm going to stick to the question. Although I do think public safety is important, we do have a pretty safe group, and you're right, a lot of the people aren't aware of the issues we have over there, and hopefully, there's a question that comes up, we can address that more closely. But I think the question was, what are we hearing out there when we talk to people? And a lot of the feedback I get is the concern on development and how that impacts the blight, and what we're going to do with the remaining open spaces that we have. It's been touched on by some of the others. But we need to do common sense development. I think there was an opportunity that just popped up in front of the council recently for a development on school craft for a hotel, where we gave incentives. That created some angst in the citizens, but it actually was a great opportunity. It didn't cost the city anything. We got an opportunity to develop a property that probably was distressed and wouldn't be developed for a while. And there's going to be opportunities to do that on Farmington and Seven Mile, Farmington and Middle Belt, on Plymouth Road. There's going to be lots of opportunities, and I'm looking forward to getting input into that.
Mr. Barr.
Everything everybody's mentioned, or things I've heard, two things where I wrote down immediately, one was police and fire. Because that's been covered a little bit, and I think we'll probably get that again, I'll focus on the other one that came to mind, and that is how do we attract young families? And I do hear this question a lot. My response to it always is, we are. Four years ago, when I was running for this, I said, "The key to attracting young families is the same thing that it's always been: public safety, excellent schools, excellent services, low taxes." Livonia's still got the formula. And I said, "Just give it time, it's going to happen." I can tell you, on my street, in the last five years, we've had nine homes sell, all of them to young families, eight of them with children. We're the second hottest, 481-54 is the second hottest zip code in the country for millennials. It's coming true, folks. Livonia still has the formula that we've always had, and it's important that we remain vigilant to make sure that we keep our eye on our core priorities, so that we can maintain that for years to come.
Mrs. McIntyre.
Thank you, and I think everyone has covered the main things out there, but I'm out in the community a lot, I hear a lot. Public safety is a big one. I spend time talking to a lot of retired public safety folks. They're very aware of what's going on with the distress that we have in the staffing in our fire, and especially our police. That's an important subject, and council has an interesting role, because council is not actually at the table for negotiations. Council has no role in the negotiations. What council can do is support the administration and make people aware of the situation, and be supportive to the officers and be supportive in discussing policies. I've been that, I've taken a strong role in that. The other one, and Greg mentioned it, was development. People are very concerned about what's going to happen with development. Is there smart development, is there overdevelopment? We recently turned down a project at Seven Mile and Victor Parkway because it was too dense. Thank you, out of time, thanks.
All right, the next question, we'll start with Mr. Donavick. In the aforementioned issue, Livonia has been one of the nation's leading markets for millennial home buyers in recent years. With that influx of young families and professionals moving to Livonia, what should the city do to engage these new, younger residents who moved here? Again, with the influx of young families and professionals moving to Livonia, what should the city do to engage these new, younger residents who have moved here? We'll start with Mr. Donavick.
I am a millennial, I mean, I have so many friends that left Livonia after we graduated from Churchill, Stevenson, et cetera, and went out to communities all over the country. And I find a lot of my friends, when I move back here. I'm fortunate, when I bought my home in Livonia, it was during a period where houses were a little bit cheaper. Houses were expensive, so I think us as a government body, we have to just be open to new ideas, be willing to listen to developers. One of the things I'm really passionate about is the revitalization of the East Side of Livonia. Why not work with these developers to redevelop the buildings along the Plymouth Road corridor, talk about how we can take some of these vacant buildings and repurpose them and make them to new companies, new businesses, that will attract younger people? These are the individuals that are the experts in their field. We need to bring them to the table, we need to work with them, not that we haven't. I think city council and the government, Livonia government's done a wonderful job, but it's one of those things that takes many years, doesn't happen overnight. So, just include the professionals, the experts in this field, and I'll work with them to get some new ideas to attract new families to make Livonia their home.
Mr. McCullough.
So, having grown up in this city, currently raising a family at the higher end of the millennial spectrum, we have an incredible city. And as I'm talking, I have a brother that's 10 years younger, and I've coached hockey teams, I've talked to these guys, and I said, "Would you move to Livonia, you know, what would be the draw?" And they said, "There's just, there's not enough amenities." I tend to look at different corners, say Seven in Farmington, say Plymouth Road corridor, say Middle Belt and Seven Mile, as opportunities. And it energizes me, I don't look at it as a negative, I look at it as opportunity. I'm a trailblazer, I like to do things, I like to be innovative, and these are great opportunities that, if I'm elected, would have awesome ideas to work with the developers, work with the chamber. We have one of the best chambers around, and to pair up with them, to come up with great business ideas, I'm excited about that. But to do that, obviously, you need to get voted in, so that's kind of my vision for it.
Mrs. McDonald.
Thank you. Well, Livonia does have a lot to offer, we have great schools, great parks. But I think that some of our smaller neighborhood parks maybe could get some enhancements, some new playground equipment, something like that, for kids and their families to go to, so they wouldn't have to necessarily travel. Maybe offering family events at the rec center for new families once a month would be an idea, as a welcome, just to get them acclimated with the rec center. And Livonia's a very safe place, people, it has its own good reputation. We have low tax base, good schools, and we have a lot to offer. And once, especially when children get to school age, they become their own little community in their own little areas. And to me, each neighborhood in Livonia is its own little city. Thank you.
Mr. Duggan.
Well, they already moved to Livonia, so they know all about the city and what we have to offer. What will make them happy, in my mind, is what we've been doing with the Arts Commission, doing events like the Family Day that we post for children, the Jazz Fest that we did just last week, the Livonia Spree. But I'd like to see more things going on at the campus of City Hall. I'd like to do Sunday breakfast, pancake breakfasts, and art shows, and whatever we can do to invite them into the community on a weekly basis. The Spree's, we do that in June, and it's done. After that, the city really does not do too much for the rest of the summer, and I'd like to do more special activities to keep them happy.
All right, also, okay, Mr. Coppola.
Thank you. Well, I think the positive thing is, is they're coming here. We're one of the hottest zip codes for millennials, so they're making that decision because there's diverse and affordable housing, there's services and amenities. I think the challenge will be to keep them here, because what we're finding, I think I see is, as their kids get older, they start to move on. So, I think some of the things that brought up have been good ideas. I mean, the walk-bike initiative that we have, the expanding that to provide more recreational services such as that. I mean, this summer, there was a Touch a Truck that was so crowded. Having more things like that to engage the younger families and have them do things within the city is great. I think also, continuing to be business-friendly, so that there's jobs here, so they have places to work and stay here. Continuing to develop the retail and restaurant community, so they can shop here and work here, I think will go a long way.
Mr. Barr.
It's always important to remember what the core function of government is, and that's to provide services to you efficiently. Other than that, the magic happens out there. When we talk about the engagement of Livonia, it goes back to the community spirit this community has. It's a tradition in this community, people getting involved with the many volunteer organizations, many youth organizations. So, we need to be careful as government to say, "We can come in with all these solutions." The magic happens with you, and it's happening. I mean, I was just making a list here, and I'm running out of space, but you look at our neighborhood associations, you look at what's going on at the YMCA, you look at the rec center where we just did a brand-new leisure pool, you look at the Livonia Soccer Club, which draws people from all over the region, you look at the park cleanups that draws all the scout groups and the school groups. Park investments was brought up, I don't even, I can't even tell you how many different equipment replacements we've done in the last few years throughout our neighborhood parks, that's ongoing. One of the things I'm very proud of is having a leading role in bringing the Christmas Parade back. That's another thing that I think has been very successful in engaging people. But let's just remember, the magic happens here. If you are engaged, the youth will be engaged.
Mrs. McIntyre.
Well, I think the most, the first most important thing, and this is what gets people here, and we see them coming here, is our outstanding value proposition. Livonia has beautiful neighborhoods, great housing stock, and remember, the second-lowest property tax rate of all 34 cities in Wayne County. That brings them here. And then you add on the fact that it's a safe community, great schools, great parks, growing parks, our walk, our bike, the connectivity. And then, and to Scott's point, government has a limited role in the outside things. But if you look at the things that government has been involved in in some way, in some ways, this is just supporting and publicizing. I count, and this is just probably in the last three or four years, new events. Scott mentioned the Christmas Parade, Touch a Truck, Corn Fest, the Kids Art Day, the new pools at Clement Circle, the new pools at the rec center. Those are all new within the last few years. And then the other thing, we're starting to see getting more creative and imaginative with our arts events. The other night at Greenmead, Alexander Zancheck, he's globally known. That draws people, keeps people here, thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Davis.
Well, I agree. Elaine and I moved into the 481-54 zip code 20 years ago, and we were that young family, so when I get that question, I'm always thinking, "Well, aren't I that person?" But my kids are in college now. But I know that we're in that hot zip code, because Elaine and I were on our couch the other day, and I heard a noise. I go, "Elaine, what's that noise?" It was kids screaming outside. All the homes that sold around me are all now occupied by a new group of children, and it's just fantastic. are all now occupied by a new group of children, and it's just fantastic. And so what can we do? We can go to Bicentennial Park every Saturday to the free timed 5K park run that we have. And I don't know if people know that, but that started in the UK. Livonia was the first city in the United States to do a park run. And what you'll see there are young families with strollers and dogs and children. And it is just a fantastic way to meet your neighbors. Come out on Saturday.
All right. And rebuttal?
Yes, please.
I just kind of want to touch base. We know we've heard, you know, government having a limited role. Being on this campaign adventure, should I call it, I've met incredible service groups. I've went through Greenmead. I've met with Livonia Save the Youth Coalition. I've met with Rotary, countless others. And what I have learned is, as a council member, if elected, I'll be there. I want to partner up. I think that collaboration is something that is somewhat lacking, that can be better. I'm not saying that there's anything negative. We have the best backdrop in the world. You're absolutely right, best parks. But I think we could do a little bit better bringing it all together. And that's what I intend on doing.
All right, then, Mr., the next new question, we'll start with Mr. McCullough as well. Does Livonia City Hall and the Livonia Civic Center campus need to be redeveloped? If so, how do you plan to do that? Does Livonia City Hall and Livonia Civic Center campus need to be redeveloped? If so, how do you plan to do that? Mr. McCullough.
So, I have a construction background, and I'm huge into sustainability and energy savings. And just looking at these bright fluorescent lights that are drawing so much energy, I look at opportunity. You know, this building was built with so much concrete. I would like, you know, and it needs a facelift. It definitely does. Is it a full redevelopment? I'm not, I'm not too sure. I know that after looking at the master plan, there's a pretty cool idea here to do the whole campus and kind of level this building. But something does need to be done. I think this building is kind of stuck in the late 70s and 80s and needs to be brought up into 2019 from an energy efficiency standpoint. So I would agree that doing some kind of development or rehabilitation using this footprint would be immensely effective.
Okay. Mrs. McDonald.
Thank you. Well, I know the master plan has indicated doing a facelift and complete redo of the current campus here. But I've heard from the citizens that they're concerned about the cost involved. They don't want to have that put on their backs. I agree with Mr. McCullough. We could change the light bulbs, save some money there, you know, put some new windows in, you know, upgrade the systems within City Hall. But I think things can be done to make this more efficient and more effective and make it more appealing. You look at this room, the carpeting's dingy, the seats are old. But these are things that could be updated and giving us a fresh look.
Mr. Duggan.
You know, I think if we did this, there'll be no cancels in Europe. I think United States, we tear buildings down when it gets to be a certain age, not keep them. This building was built for a reason, and it works fine. I don't really believe in tearing down history. The rest of the campus, there was a plan on that back in the 70s. Now there's a new plan. I'm all forward of making this a larger campus, but the building itself should stay as it is and just obviously fix it up a little bit. I was on council when we hired Honeywell. They came in and did an engineering design to help us with our energy back then. And obviously, energy changes all the time, so it's time to perhaps change the light bulbs, I guess that's what you want to say, so.
Mr. Coppola.
Yeah, I would be supportive of redevelopment. This building particularly is outdated and was poorly designed from the beginning. It's a nightmare to heat and cool, and it's extremely expensive to operate. So I think it's worth taking the recommendations in the master plan and start looking at opportunities and how we can leverage that master plan to make a better, a better city campus. I thought the plan was pretty good. Is it going to cost money? Absolutely. And you're talking to one of the guys that is extremely fiscally responsible, doesn't like to spend other people's money unless I know that there's a good return on the investment. But I think in the case of redeveloping the city campus, I believe there will be a good return on investment, not only, not only for the citizens, but I think for the community in whole, because it will create a gathering place, a place where all the citizens can come together. There could be an amphitheater for the arts. There's other things you could do. I think it's time to take a real serious look at redevelopment.
Okay. Rebuttal?
It won't be 30 seconds. Amphitheater was on the master plan back in the 70s. A great idea. The campus itself, I have no problem with. We should make this a focal point. I'm just not sure if we need to tear the building down. That's, we're in right now, because I feel safe in here, so.
Mr. Barr.
So it's been interesting to watch this issue bubble up. When I first came on council, I think it was in our first year, it was the first time that I was even aware that people were talking about it internally, and nobody really wanted to talk about it publicly. And it's kind of lifted and lifted our profile, and here we have it at a candidate forum. My first response when I heard, for the first time, the idea of, do we need to replace City Hall? I was like, are you kidding me? This is an iconic building in the city. I happen to like the look of the building, and plus, it would be really expensive. I will tell you, having been on council for four years, it's an incredibly inefficient building. And each year, as we look at the operating costs of this building, and as we look at some major repairs that have come our way, every time we look at each other and go, how many more of these do we do before we start looking at replacing the place? It's not an easy thing to do. Politically, it's a hot button. But the fact of the matter is, the master plan that we just did, and you can Google Livonia Vision 21 to see it, has a pretty exciting idea for the city campus. As is the nature of a master plan, that plan could take 10, 20, 40 years to do. But it's a pretty neat vision, and I'm glad that we're talking about it. It's not something that's going to happen tomorrow. We'll do it responsibly, but I think it's something we need to be talking about.
Mrs. McIntyre.
Absolutely. Eventually, this building needs to be replaced. I worked on the Master Plan Committee. It's ongoing. And Scott's point, it was a very comprehensive process, and the public was invited to participate at every step of the development of the plan. The City Hall cannot be made energy efficient. It cannot be made safe, and it cannot be made modern. And every time we approve a million dollars to fix air handlers and plumbing systems, we're reminded of that. We also have on this campus a police department that is out of date. It can't be made secure. It doesn't use space correctly to reflect new law enforcement practices. We have a senior center that is too small and isn't configured correctly. We have an old courthouse that we pay a lot of money to maintain, and it is, it can't be used very efficiently because there are limitations on how the space can be used. So we do, we have a library that needs some reimagining. We're contemplating spending $200,000 to replace the floor. So this campus does need to be reimagined. You do it responsibly over the long term with bonding, and it can be done responsibly and fiscally responsibly. Thank you.
Mr. Davis.
Yeah, I'm excited about the possibility of developing this area, this Farmington and Five Mile Road area. We're already, we're already holding concerts here. We're having community events here. And there is space here to think about how we draw the community here and how we serve them in a way, a larger way than we do now. Regardless of how and where we keep our city buildings, this area is ripe for development. It's in the Livonia 21 Master Plan. People do have an idea that we could have a gathering place, not like a downtown Plymouth, but like a gathering place that fits Livonia and the characteristics of Livonia, like all the concerts that probably you and I attended over the summer. Imagine having walkability and parks developed and stands and food courts and really gathering a place we could gather as a community. And I find that exciting and something that we could work on over time as we go forward. Thank you.
Mr. Donavich.
It's encouraging to see so many people that are running for office with pretty much the same idea of redeveloping this area. I think of the vision of one day being all of us as a community coming to Livonia and gathering in this area. We've talked about the amphitheater. We talked about trying to figure out what to do with these buildings that sit vacant. There's so much area, so much landscape here that we could turn into new usable area for families to come and gather. We talked about the downtown area. I think this is probably the best place to have a downtown. It's right in the heart of the city. So much is built around this Square Mile right here. So I'd love to see all kinds of different ideas come here, the amphitheaters, the gathering spaces in general, so that these young families who talk about will want to come here, will want to gather, will have a good time. And I think that'd be a great vision for this little area right here.
Okay. Okay, our next question comes from the audience, and it'll go to Mrs. McDonald. What kind of improvements do you have in mind to enhance Greenmead Historical Park to not only repair it, but to make it more active? What kind of improvements do you have in mind to enhance Greenmead Historical Park to not only repair it, but to make it more active? Mrs. McDonald.
Well, for one thing, I think what needs to be done is to redo some of the roads, well, to pave the road. I think it would make it more friendly, more walkable for people to come through Greenmead. The area, the parking lot that they just redid, I know, I think they could expand some of the ADA, the handicap parking spots there. Right now, there's only two. And I think when you've got a large crowd, I think sometimes you need more than two spots for that. I would really love to see, and I don't know how this would be possible, to move the home that's on Seven Mile, maybe somehow get some sort of group or donations to have that home moved over to Greenmead. I think it would be a wonderful asset, and then actually help with the redevelopment in that area and preserve that property, because we don't want it to rot and go away.
Mr. Duggan.
I was just there last Friday, West Friday, right, Virginia? Anyhow, I was just there last Friday. I think just paving the roads and everything. We want the Greenmead to look like it was supposed to be, like, history-wise. So we don't really want to change too much. Did have, Alexander did ask why. Why is it called the Blue House when it was brown? Because we had to tell him why, so he was shocked. So anyhow, I think it's fine the way it is. It is the history of Livonia. If we can bring more history buildings into it, great. I do remember moving the Blue House. You know, I was around. I watched it come over. I didn't actually help do it. But yeah, it's a fine thing. And I like to leave it the way it is and just pave the streets and park a lot a little bit more.
Mr. Coppola.
Yeah, I think Greenmead as it is, is, again, tended to be a historical place, and it should reflect that. You know, one of the things that I was really disappointed about with Greenfield Villages, when they paved all those streets, I remember going there, you know, as a young family, and all of the streets were gravelled such. It gave you that feeling of kind of going back in time. So I think going around and paving everything takes away from the historical part. I think, in the sense of, it's not improvement, but it's just maintaining and making sure all the property looks good, looks authentic, is well-maintained, is usable, and then promoting the use of it in the community more so that it gets a lot more use than it does right now. Parking lots are always great. I think there's quite a bit of parking there now. I think generally it fits. I think it's just maintaining it itself is probably all I would suggest.
Mr. Barr.
So I'll just start with a fun little anecdote. Brian mentioned the Blue House. There's a history book upstairs of Livonia that actually is from 1987. There's a picture in my first grade classes, and they're watching the Blue House move down Six Mile Road. So I remember that, too. Greenmead, Greenmead is an underused opportunity, I think. I would be, it'd be interesting to see what percentage of this room has been over to Greenmead and toured those buildings. I encourage you to take the opportunity to do that and see what's there. Last night, we had a very long finance budget meeting here at City Hall. I got home about 10:30. And one of the conversations that we had there was actually on this topic. What can we be doing with Greenmead? And the thought was expressed that there's potential revenue generation opportunity at Greenmead. Don't just look at it just as an expense, but is, are there private partners we could bring in to actually do something with it? I don't have all the answers to that, but less than 24 hours ago, we were talking about the need to explore that further. I'm going to be out of town here in a second, so I'm just going to say, I think Greenfield Village actually provides an excellent model of what you can do with a space like that.
Mrs. McIntyre.
Greenmead obviously always needs improvements. The people that work on the Greenmead Commission can tell you that, and money is always tight. The Livonia Committee foundation partners with Greenmead, and through our partnership, we're able to help fund projects over there. We replaced fencing, and that might seem like something boring, but it's historical fencing, and it has to be done in a certain way for Greenmead to keep its places on the historical register. We've worked on upgrading and replacing and repairing the greenhouse. We need to continue to look at it for creative spaces. The concert Friday night that I talked about with Alexander Zancheck was a great idea. Those things also generate awareness, and they can generate additional revenue for Greenmead. I like what's done over there. Bringing the school over creates new opportunities. We need to keep doing more of some of the things we do. We've added the Irish Festival. We now have the Irish Festival, the Highland Games. Those are all great opportunities to make Greenmead more aware, make people more aware of it, and raise additional funding. Thank you.
Mr. Davis.
Yeah, what I'm thinking is, council and you, the citizens are on the same page with Greenmead. Greenmead was a question that I was asked as well out in the community while campaigning. So there is a concern and awareness of Greenmead. And I know that from talking to you, that Greenmead needs help. Greenmead is a treasure, and it's an opportunity for Livonia to shine. But it's also in need of repair and funding and management and all those things that go into creating value in our city. And that's what the council was trying to address. I was at that meeting, and I think as we move forward, there's other assets in the city that fit this model, including Wilson Barn, another asset that we have that we have to protect and fund and manage and keep it as an asset for our citizens.
And Mr. Donavich.
Scott Barr hit on a great note, underused opportunity. There are so many cities across the state would love to have such a beautiful historic park like that. I've toured it. I've been there many times. Some of the buildings you can't even walk into because they're not safe to walk inside of them. Some of the roofs are falling apart, some walls are falling in, shingles are falling off. The list goes on to the repairs that need it. Now, unfortunately, that takes money, funding. But right now, I think we look at it as an expense. But we can work with some partners. There's tons of private organizations that would love to partner and start holding banquets there, start holding small weddings there. There's so many different things that we can charge, that we can start generating some revenue there and help offset those costs to make it more of the park that it needs to be. So that hopefully, one day, the things that are falling apart are fixed, and we can start having some really fun activities there.
And Mr. McCullough.
Show of hands, how many people have been to Greenmead? Most of this room, correct? You've got Alexander Blue, you've got the Shaw House, you've got the Old Intersection, you've got the New School House, which I've learned that Thomas Edison actually wired up. These are incredible pieces of history that are out there. And that is, Greenmead is a gem. And just like, as Rob touched base on, having a construction background and walked through, it needs a lot of help. But it is. It's a diamond in a rough. Scott touched on Greenfield Village. I have a five-year-old. We look for places to take our youngsters for Halloween walks, Christmas parades. And I look at, after talking to staff out there, there is so much opportunity. And maybe you have, like, partner, private, you know, sponsorship to fund these buildings. But right now, if we don't start doing something, we're going to start losing them.
All right. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Duggan on this one. Now that Michigan voters have approved legal use of recreational marijuana, would you support action by the Livonia City Council to enable businesses in Livonia to sell and/or manufacture marijuana? Why or why not? Again, would you support action by the Livonia City Council to enable businesses in Livonia to sell and/or manufacture marijuana? Why or why not? Mr. Duggan.
Well, I'm hoping the state will start activating that, because we're losing tax revenue on this. I'd rather have marijuana for sale than paying a 45 cents gas tax to fix the quote-unquote damn roads. Would I support it in Livonia? I would support it just like we would support other items and proper zoning issues, zoning places. Do I want it on every street corner? Absolutely not. But we have, we can control that by zoning and put it in certain places. It could just be maybe in the industrial place. It is legal. We have to look at it. It's legal. And hopefully profit off of it with taxes.
Mr. Coppola.
Let's split that into two pieces. First, there's the manufacturer side of it. I mean, that's relatively, in essence, is going to be an industrial operation. That belongs in industrial, commercial area. Zoning, enforcement and such should allow for that, but in the right places. It's legal. Citizens spoke, Livonia citizens spoke that they wanted it legal. So from that perspective, then we just need to manage it to make sure that when it comes in, that it's done in a responsible way that doesn't impact the neighborhoods. Now, the sell side is a different animal, and there's some difficulties there now. It's still legal on a federal basis. Businesses cannot use national banks to transact their business. So it's going to be a little bit of an odd thing. Again, I think, though, if we're proactive, set up the proper ordinances and zoning and control it, similar to liquor licenses, limit it also, that we can manage it so that it's acceptable in the community.
Mr. Barr.
So the proposal that passed last year that legalized recreational marijuana, that is the law of the land. There's nothing we can do about that. But that proposal, which we all passed, included the option for communities to opt out of allowing it to be sold in storefronts. Livonia, like, I think it's above 100 Michigan communities now. I'm not sure where the number is, but it's a lot. Livonia opted out of that pretty quickly. We had a 7-0 vote last December, tapped out of that. I think it was the right move. Even, I think it was 55% of the city voted, something like that, voted to, for that proposal. I'm strongly confident that 55% of the city don't want marijuana storefronts in their backyard. I think we've even already heard that with some of the answers here tonight. We, I will just say, too, I think this whole marijuana thing is going to continue to cause problems. We're already seeing it in the city. If you've watched council meetings, you've seen it with homes being turned into marijuana grow operations. They're being gutted. They're going to end up having to be condemned. There are problems for the neighbors and the kids that are around them. This is going to be a problem we have to deal with for a long time. It's here. We're going to have to deal with it. But I'm glad we don't have marijuana storefronts in the city, and I don't intend for them to be here.
Mrs. McIntyre.
It was absolutely the right vote, as Scott mentioned. The council voted 7-0 to opt out of having marijuana in our community. Some said, well, 55% of the people in Livonia voted for it. They voted to allow recreational use. That's very different from voting to want it on your street corner. And we've heard from people who use medical marijuana who'd very much like a dispensary in our community. They have to go to Redford. They have to go to Detroit. They have to go to Ann Arbor. The problem is, if you ask them if they wanted the dispensary on their street corner, they wouldn't. You are offered, communities that opt in can benefit from an excise tax. They're given an excise tax because if you have marijuana business in your community, you end up spending a lot more money in law enforcement, and you draw their problems. On issues like these, I tend first to go to our public safety community. I know a lot of our police officers well, and I ask them what they think, because they see this firsthand. They absolutely thought it was the right thing for Livonia to opt out. So it was no regrets, right decision. Thank you.
Mr. Davis.
As a parent, I still see recreational marijuana as a risk. I heard, I don't know, a couple weeks ago, Detroit Receiving Hospital did a study. 51% of the youth under seven, coming to them from the poison control part of the hospital, were for marijuana edibles, something that we've never seen in the past. And as a police officer, I understand that as a society, we expect our laws to be followed, and we can't ignore the federal law that marijuana is illegal. You know, Michigan was hasty in passing the MRTMA on December 6, 2018, and we still haven't untangled the rules on how to make this happen for people who want to participate in recreational marijuana. As a candidate for council and As a candidate for council, I think the prudent course of action was for them to deny and wait for clarity in these laws. Of course, you know, recreational marijuana is different than, and separate from the medical marijuana law that's approved for patients, outlets and caregivers. And that's been on the books for a very long time. And we're not trying to impede anyone from getting care through their doctor.
Mr. Donavick?
I do not support marijuana facilities in Livonia. The legislation that passed in 2018 gave cities the option to opt out. Livonia opted out and I support that decision. I don't want marijuana facilities in my neighborhood. I wish that we as a society were less dependent on drugs, on alcohol. I wish there were less party stores in our city. I wish there were more homes in our city. I wish there was more innovative developments in our city. So I do not support it.
Mr. McCullough?
So in the last forum, I did the answer of, hey, it's not approved at the federal level, so I wouldn't be for it. As the campaign journey went on, I met a lot of people that suffer from chronic illness. And they voiced their concern on being able to have a close proximity to obtain their medical marijuana. As I said before, Livonia was master plan great. So we have a secluded industrial corridor. And I'm not saying I'm totally for it, but I'd like, I would be open to looking at something that say you have a section of the industrial corridor, we enforce a facade ordinance to not make the flashy lights, but somewhere where someone could get their medical marijuana in proximity away from our 78% of residential homes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you. Well, you know, I understand Livonia's position on not opting in. I'm sure for Livonia, it was the right thing to do, even though I know 55% of the folks here voted for it. But there's too many unknowns. Right now, the state isn't, doesn't have anything clear on that direction, what the cities should be doing. As we know, at the federal level, it's not legal. So there's just too many unknowns in that area. However, I believe that maybe looking at some sort of medical marijuana facility within industrial areas, Mr. McCullough indicated, would be a good idea. It would give folks who need it, who depend on it, an option to get it without traveling long distances to take care of that.
All right. Now our next question, we'll start with Mr. Coppola. What would you do to encourage owners of empty and aging buildings to redevelop their structures? What would you do to encourage owners of empty and aging buildings to redevelop those structures? Mr. Coppola?
Well, you know, that's a difficult one because I'm a big proponent of private property rights. But I think one of the things we saw, again, like I mentioned earlier, recently, we provided some incentives for redevelopment of a vacant area. And I think we can continue to do things like that where we can incentivize them to redevelop. It's going to be difficult as we cycle out probably a recession in the next couple of years as we'll, to get people to come in. But I think, you know, between the master plan that's outlined some things, incentives that are available to us, tax incentives and other incentives, partnering with some of the bigger developers in the area and nationwide, again, hottest zip code, there's lots of people here. So we need to just make sure that everybody understands why they should be in Livonia and that we can help to redevelop those areas.
Mr. Barr?
We always need to remember, as Greg mentioned, that these are privately owned places. We can't just swoop in there and do what we want with them. But what we can do is make sure that we have an environment that invites investment. I think one, some of the things investors are looking for is they're looking for an attractive tax climate and they're looking at consistency from the city. And that's been a big mantra of mine the last four years is make sure we're consistent in how we apply these incentives. When I brought this up Monday night, I had no intention of bringing it up here, but this is actually very fresh. Just Monday night, I offered to put in committee and then council passed it, the subject of what we can do strategically in the East Plymouth Road corridor area, which is one of the three focus areas of our master plan, by the way. That's Plymouth Road between Inkster and Middlebelt, which is, which could use some reinvestment. And I would like to be proactive as a council to look at how we can create an enterprise zone over there that would give some of the tax incentives for people to come in there. I want to give that a kickstart. It's part of the master plan, it'd be good for that part of the city and it's worked in other places in the city.
All right. Mrs. McIntyre?
Well, and there's a distinction between blighted vacant properties and properties that like, you know, vacant strip malls or strip malls where a lot of things are empty. Where you have blighted empty properties, just like the abandoned beauty school over on 96, just west of Merriman, where we just approved the commercial rehabilitation certificate. We need to use the tax incentives that are available to us to encourage the highest and best use. We talk about that a lot. We always want the highest and best use in any given location. So use tax incentives where they're appropriate, where they fit, where they make sense. As far as abandoned or underutilized strip malls, one of the things, important things to do, especially for ones that are vacant or largely vacant, you use your ordinance enforcement. You make sure that they're held to the standards that we set for property standards. And then to Scott's point, we can't dictate what to do, but we can encourage and we can be flexible. And one of the things that we've done recently is we've approved Class C liquor licenses for in-restaurant consumption for a new Mexican restaurant and Zucan's Rib Shack. And it's not that we want to encourage people to drink, but we want, we want to provide more casual dining options for people in Livonia where they can eat in. Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Well, we have a model, we have the Plymouth Road corridor model that is in the master plan to help develop distressed properties. I think another idea is low-interest loans, perhaps short-term tax breaks, but I think the chamber could play a role as well and bring together developers and owners who could act on ideas with capital to use those spaces, who may just need a small amount of help and bring on an investor. We could certainly use enforcement and Ms. McIntyre saying zoning cooperation. I've seen that at the meetings, it's very effective. It's something that they do now. And I agree that we need to encourage the highest and best use for the areas and be realistic.
Mr. Donavick?
Most of the vacant buildings are along the eastern corridor. Drive up and down Plymouth Road, up and down Inkster Road, a lot of vacant buildings down there. I think working with the business class, working with the Chamber of Commerce, these are the experts. Bringing together all of the big key players in the room, talking to them, see what they, see what we as a government can do. Like they mentioned, private property rights, we have to respect the rights of the people that own these buildings, but work with them. See how we can, how we can encourage them to redevelop as opposed to building brand-new on the west side, tons of traffic on the west side. How about we bring some of these great opportunities, great ideas to the eastern side of Livonia where most of these vacant buildings are at and see what kind of creative innovative ideas we can come up to with that still make up the character of Livonia and what we want in our city, but also can fill some of these vacant areas.
Mr. McCullough?
So how do you bring, how do you make a developer put something on their property? You can't, city government can't. But we need to market the city. As we talked about parks, great schools, great people, families coming in, we need to sell Livonia's story. I think that goes in tune with infrastructure upgrades. I think that goes in tune with promoting our parks. I think that goes in tune with enhancing our economic development department, pairing up with a renowned Chamber of Commerce and bringing these businesses to these developers. Then we could work with them to find the right plan. I mean, I look at different corners and what awesome things could be there. But it takes a village, in this case, a city, to bring everything together. And that's what I intend to do.
Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you. Well, I do agree with some of the others that say that you cannot dictate to a property owner what to do with their properties. However, we do have an economic development department that could help and encourage to bring new businesses into empty spaces that are being utilized. I think that's something that the property owners would use. I mean, how many buildings that you see out in the corners that are not leased? So that's one aspect. And I do agree that offering tax incentives are something that should be considered. I know the issue that was brought up in reference to the property on Schoolcraft was somewhat interesting, but a lot, part of the problem was communication. And I think if there was more information at the time, I think we would have had a little different outcome on conversation. Thank you.
And Mr. Duggan?
Like you said, I agree.
I'm sorry, I'll get you next, Catherine. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I don't know if we, do we rebut now or?
Yeah, I mean, I didn't see you soon enough. I'm sorry.
I'd like to address what Ms. McDonald said about the communication. And I made this point, I had a very lengthy Facebook post about this. That in particular incentive, it showed up on agendas four times and public, two public hearings, which are always publicized in the newspaper, on our website and on the city calendar. It was on, both of those agendas, it was on two regular meetings. And it's listed as an economic rehabilitation certificate. And if you come to a meetings and you don't, and you see that four times, you don't know what it is, ask somebody. So there was, there was full communication on that. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Duggan?
Starts the clock over here. You can't really force somebody on their property. I agree with everybody on that. I was on council when Walmarts originally wanted to come in over there at the Forest City and all they wanted to do was open the doors and say Walmarts. The developer Forest City from Ohio did not want to spend a nickel. They didn't want to do the blacktop, they didn't want to do anything. At that point, council had the hammer because they wanted to develop something. And so we forced them to do, resurface the parking lot and paint the building. We talked to a developer who got into DRC. So we could work with developers and try to get them to redevelop things, but we can't force anybody to do it. Tax incentives is a good way to doing it. I assume if we're talking about, Rob's talking about the east side of Plymouth Road, unfortunately, sometimes businesses, they want to go out west. And no matter what you do, you can't force a business to open up on the east side when they want to be on the west side.
All right. That's all the time we have.
Can I squeak rebuttal in real quick?
Yes.
And it's not so much a rebuttal as just take the opportunity. I want people to understand how these tax incentives work. When we talk about this, we're not talking about writing a check to developers. What we're talking about is giving them a certain period of time, which we look at the numbers and figure what's appropriate for that, a certain period of time in which the tax stays where it is while they make their improvements, before it recovers to the taxes going up and improves property. That's what it is. So yes, we are, when we do those tax incentives, giving up on short-term opportunity for revenue, but we're not, we're not losing money. And the thinking is that I have to stop.
Good thinking.
All right. That's all the time we have for questions. So we'll now give each candidate a chance for a one-minute closing statement, starting with Mr. Barr.
Thank you, Chamber of Commerce, for hosting this event. Thank you, citizens, for coming here. I think the participation we get at these events speaks well for Livonia. In a forum like this, there's obviously an advantage to be an incumbent. I come in here intimately familiar with a lot of the issues that have been raised tonight. That experience is valuable, but beyond experience, I think it's important to look for candidates whose service here is an extension of a lifetime, a pattern of community service. It's been 21 years since I turned 18 and became eligible to vote. I haven't looked this up, so somebody can find it and call me on it if I'm wrong, but to my knowledge, I don't think I've ever missed an election. I've been involved in here ever since I turned 18. When I was 23, my wife and I bought our first home here. It was shortly after that that I joined a volunteer committee with Livonia Public Schools. In the time since then, there has not been a time that I've not been involved in this community, too many committees to name with the time that I have here. You can go to scottbarr.org if you want to read it. My point is, I did not run for council four years ago out of some kind of ambition. It was a natural extension of my lifetime of services to this community. I thank you for the opportunity, for you entrusting me to serve you on council. I ask for your vote on November 5th and I'll be available for as long as people have questions outside of here for anything that we didn't have an opportunity to ask tonight. Thanks.
Mrs. McIntyre?
Again, thank you to our chamber, our audience and my fellow candidates. Tonight, you've heard from eight different candidates who have very different views and some different ideas about the city and ideas for its future. As you consider everything you heard tonight, I do ask you to keep something really important in mind. Livonia is a thriving community with a population well over 90,000. It was just named, as you heard before, one of Michigan's safest cities. It has one of the country's hottest zip codes and it has the second lowest property tax rate of all 34 cities in Wayne County. And yet, we still provide our residents with exceptional services, amenities, parks and recreational facilities. Accomplishments like this don't happen without strong leadership and an outstanding city workforce. There are always opportunities for improvement and innovation. During the past years, I've embraced new ideas and ways to better serve our citizens. I will always be very appreciative of the people and the leaders I've had the opportunity to serve with and those who came before me who've helped to make Livonia exceptional. Thank you so much for the privilege of serving you and I ask for your support on November 5th. Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. West, and thank you, audience, for listening to us tonight. I'm running to represent and speak for all citizens of Livonia. I'm passionate about public service and I love this community. I'm ready to hit the ground running on day one to accomplish the daily business of the city as one of your representatives on council. I've worked consistently to meet many of you as possible and I've earned the support of thousands of votes over the last four months, sharing my story, going door-to-door, attending and sponsoring community events, charity fundraisers, volunteering to help our very important people at the senior center. I now ask for your help and your continued support on November 5th. Please spread the word to those not able to attend and ask for a commitment from five of your friends to vote for me and I guarantee you will have a voice at the council table. So thank you and good night.
All right. Mr. Donavick?
On November 5th, you can vote for four council people, four people to be new council people in the Livonia City Council. I hope that I can be one of those votes. Running for city council this year is my first time running for Livonia City Council. I've met so many people, most of you in the crowd, and I never would have met you if it wasn't. So this has been the most, the biggest honor of my life, running to represent the community I love. It's why I joined the police department, it's why I joined the military. I want to serve. This is what I feel like I've been called to do, to work hard and give back to the community that you love. I've learned a lot about my community and I feel like I can offer a lot of different ideas to my community as well. I hope that all of you can get out to vote November 5th and I hope that I can be one of your votes. Thank you.
Mr. McCullough?
So I had a speech prepared, but you know what? Livonia is a real place. It's with real people and you deserve the real me. So when I jumped into this race as a reflection, I had all the ambition in the world and I still do. On the campaign trail, in the political atmosphere, whether you're red or blue, pro-life, pro-choice, these questions face you. And what I keep on rebutting back is, this is not part of being a council member. And I tell you what, I'm in this for you, for the city of Livonia. The minute if I were to ask or if you, give you an answer, the fact that I grew up here, the fact that I'm an LPS student, the fact that I graduated with honors or had this great professional career is out the window, I ask all of you to vote for Livonia. And I'm in this because I want your vote and I want this job. Thank you.
Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you. Thank you again, the chamber, for hosting this evening. Someone made a comment to me yesterday that I wasn't flashy and for me, that kind of, I took that as a compliment. I've already proven myself to this community. I care, I don't accept whatever, whatever answer is given without complete information and I'm not here for my ego. I'm not running just to use this as a next step. I'm running to serve the city of Livonia to the best of my abilities and want to be the council member that is remembered for doing the right thing and making things better for all. I'm asking all the voters to please take a look at each of the candidates, their abilities, what their background brings and their professional experiences and why they're running. Sometimes we get campaign literature and look at Facebook ads and that try to push information. So anyway, take a look. I'm asking you to support my quest to be a member of Livonia City Council and please vote for me, Eileen McDonald, on November 5th. Thank you.
Mr. Duggan?
Thank you. In today's job market, employers are looking for experienced people. I'm saying this because the city council is a job and you guys are the employer. So I ask yourself, I'm sorry, so I ask yourself, do you want somebody experienced that can start the job from day one or somebody who's not experienced? That's the simplest point. I have six years serving you in Livonia City Council. One hour as a council, I offered a resolution to start the perimeter program. Added more police officers in our neighborhoods. Kept the taxes low, expanded the recycling bin, recycling program, excuse me, saved a million dollars in the waste contract. Analyzed, adjusted and approved six city budgets. I was the chairman of the water sewer waste committee. I was the chairman of the street roads and plaques committee, so on and so on.